The, it's in here, isn't it? And I know it was in the items you sent us, Mary.
Addendum to the Star County Plan.
That's it. Where's the add on?
It's something projected. It's in the.
Over here. Addendum to the Star County, there it is.
So it's basically saying we're gonna, and are putting in rules and procedures that we're following that will miss, correct?
You're right.
Yes.
Really needs to be done. Do we have to have a motion?
Need to open the.
Hearing to public.
Do I have a motion to open?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the rules and procedure, rule three point six, putting it on the screen.
I'll second that.
Okay, on favor?
Alright.
There isn't really, okay, well, I mean, it's just done electronically instead of.
First and second.
Second.
I forgot on mic.
I mean, we're just opening it up so that way it's, it has to be, what is it, July first? Is that when it has to be done in the first place?
Yeah, so, I mean, ordinance is.
Really, we're going to ordinance.
This is. They're saying we're going to follow the.
Rules and procedures.
Yeah.
In addition, basically, to it.
Do I understand it right that if we participate by this method, electronic, we cannot vote?
Right.
Right, that was.
I just want to make that clear for the public.
This is just so our rules and procedures reflect back to that ordinance.
Do we have any public comment on, does anybody want to make any comments about that?
One wants. Go.
I make a motion to close.
What are we, we can't hear. What are we discussing? What's the, right now, the last thing we're talking about?
They electronic, so, so physically, if you're a board member on the planning commission or the BZA, you could still pretty much view the meeting, but you could not vote, so it just makes it open so that way you can actually, I don't know, I would say not really participate because you can't vote, so.
Yeah, you can make your opinion.
I know. You know, you have microphone up there, could you all speak just a little bit louder and clearer? So we can, you know, we're not hearing all of it.
Absolutely, sure, and you're welcome, there's a couple. Yeah, you're welcome to move up if it helps.
If you can.
Oh, fine, fine, um, I, I'll stay here.
Does this have anything to do with the reform of the recorded meetings going forward, or is this something separate?
It does, this is just so that when we made the ordinance, we needed, we had rules and procedures, and our rules and procedures didn't allow us to attend meetings. By electronic communication, so in order to follow the ordinance, we needed an amendment to our rules, so it's just a three-step process to do the electronic meetings.
You know, one reason why I asked for that, because I was in the department, we had trouble like yesterday recording in our meeting, we couldn't record it, so if you're at a point where you can't record a meeting, does that mean the meeting can't happen, or do you?
I would say yes.
If there's like, it's my understanding, if there's like technical problems or something at the meeting, it's fine, as long as you record it, still, yeah, like, normal, it just had to be like.
It has to be posted someplace, the meeting is not on YouTube right now, and I thought it was supposed to be.
Oh, it's not on YouTube? No, it's not, because I can't get it, it won't sign in, yeah, it won't sign in.
Yeah, because that was one of the reasons, I think, a couple meetings before, at least in the interim for maybe a a month or two, maybe it wouldn't be a good idea to have one of the IT folks here at the meeting to help the boards kind of weather through this process.
Well, that's why we wanted to get started early, we still got a couple months, but it sounds like we're having some technical trouble, but that's a great idea.
So you say you can't do both, or you're double checking that, that you're not going to two votes, so you can only get one? If I'm understanding right.
You won't be able to vote at all if you're electronically participating, we have to be here physically in order for our votes.
Any other comments? I have a motion that.
Home, make motion to close public comment.
I agree. Oh, sorry.
You can do it.
Have a motion in a second? Question? Maybe really not, we've been discussing this for a while.
Yep. Mary, have you worked with Stanley? To try to get some education?
Well, yeah, with Luke, but it's not taking the password.
Oh.
Yeah, I just called.
I got you.
Yeah. He said it was, it was messing up or something for somebody else too, so.
Yeah, we've had trouble at commissioner meetings and so forth.
Yeah.
We have to have a motion to go forward against the addendum.
If that's what you choose to do.
We'll make a motion that we move forward with the addendum to the Star County Plan Commission Rule of Procedure, Rule three point six.
And that covers the BZA also, correct? Or does it have to have a separate?
I think they vote on it separate.
Okay, okay. Okay, have a motion, have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
I agree.
Okay. Uh, new old business, stop work order? I assume that's Boz?
Well, actually, it's kind of me.
Oh, okay.
So really, I just wanted to address, for those that were at the last meeting, we had discussed putting in a stop work order for next era due to some concerns that we had around a decommissioning bond, starting construction, and a few other things, so just to update the public, Boz and I went out to the site the next day? Was it the next day, Boz? Or is it the day after?
I think it was the next.
The next day. Um, and took a look, there was just some kind of a test thing going on. Either way, after digging into it more, it was discovered that in the end of 2024, while our ordinance does require a decommissioning bond before the start of construction, the county signed into a different decommissioning agreement than what the ordinance required, which is allowing Next Era to not require a bond until the project is energized. So we will not have a bond during construction from for the Next Era project. Now, before anybody freaks out, I'm going to double check with Tim Boz. My assumption is that in the event that something were to go awry during construction, it's my understanding that the county would be able to enforce to the landowner the requirements to clean up anything that might be left behind, and there could be fines and so on, am I correct in that?
Uh, could be, what do you think, Boz? You know, I thought that's what we came up with.
So the county is still protected, we're just not protected with a bond? Um.
That brings up very, a very good invalid thing. A decommissioning bond should never be with the county. It should be with property owners. There is no reason the county is involved in that bond. There is no project that's ever let in this world where the bond is not with the owner. The county has no business meddling in these people's business, if they can sign that lease, they can deal with the bond, and it's their problem. And that's the way it should be. Because we don't need to be big brother, so that needs to be, that needs to be changed in the ordinance.
I already looked, I started looking into that, and I know we're going to talk about the ordinance in a little bit, so that's definitely a valid point, though, that the bond, we can require it, but it just needs to be between the landowner and contractor, not, you know, the company, not with the county. So. So that's what we know about the stop work order, the only question that I have, Tim, is so, and this is just through my understanding, so while our ordinance is two separate lines, it requires the decommissioning agreement and separately a bond prior to the start of construction. While we did the decommissioning agreement, does the decommissioning agreement still override that secondary line in the ordinance, since we didn't have an amendment?
County may agree over now, it does.
Okay. So even though it's a separate line, it won't go over, we can't still require that because it's part of the ordinance, okay? Got it.
And I think the other interesting fact was, I think you found out that the Next Era has not exercised its option with the land. And it's not happening.
Got it. Yeah.
So does that mean that the stop order that you all warned about was not put in?
Yeah, it did not need to be enforced, based on the findings that were discovered, so. Um, the only other thing that was discussed at that meeting was the potential for floodplain that we weren't aware of. My assumption is, and one, maybe you can help me out here, is if they do in fact decide to move forward with those pieces or parcels that had were listed as floodplain, my assumption is that they'll have to go through item to get what they need, and then potentially drainage board. If any regulated drains are affected. If any. But otherwise, they'd go through the planning commission office with Maird. Okay, so just if it's drainage and then item would still, or DNR would take care of anything if they do decide to use property that's in the floodplain?
No, if, if they decide to place anything in the floodplain.
Right.
Then, uh, they'd have to go through, well, they really wouldn't have to get an elevation certificate or anything, because it's not a structure that's over four hundred square feet that they're placing. So it falls under that guideline that they give us.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to understand that a little bit more, just because I know when I talked to, I believe it was Hoosier, part of why they pulled out of a lot of theirs was because of the floodplain.
They do.
Doesn't cause any requirements, it seems they wouldn't have pulled out of that.
It's easier not in the floodplain, I mean, I know with the last project with um, Next Era, they did get an elevation certificate, I believe, for some of it.
Okay, so, so if they do go there, we just have to make sure that they have the elevation certificate, get some Boz, you'll follow them on that. And then just one last thing on that is, um, I was curious, Boz, do we have any update on the as-built plans? Tim, were we able to send anything or get in touch with Next Era to get to, to move forward with something? Do we have a plan on how to move forward to?
The one I dealt with on the last Next Era, I think returning my calls, so, I mean.
So what do we need to do, Tim, since that's part of our ordinance?
I don't know if you're still going to be a part of this one or not, you know, I mean, I don't.
If they're supposed to supply us the as-built plans and they're not doing it, and now not returning Boz's call, calls, how do we enforce that they do that from the, from their first project?
From the first project.
This is the first project.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not up to speed on the first one, I've been dealing with.
Right.
They have not exercised their options, so it's not a go right now.
Right, yeah, on the first project, they're done, so the project is complete, and upon completion, they're supposed to provide us with as-built plans per the ordinance. And that's what we have not been able to get our hands on.
As-built with the first.
Yep.
Anything else on the stop work order?
Uh, no, that's it for that.
Okay, I know it's not a requirement here, but since there was good discussion, does anybody in the public have anything they want to weigh in?
Yeah, maybe more than well.
Do the minutes say, because the last meeting you approved a stop order, so do the minutes say that, do they need corrected? Or are you re-stating?
I guess we give, Tim, should we make a motion to take the stop work order off?
We discussed it in exactly the session, but you can't vote, so you need to make a motion to rescind that order.
Okay, well, I will make a motion that we rescind the stop work order for Next Era.
Okay, have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, on favor?
I, I.
Okay. So we're good for the stop?
Yes. Was there anything else from the public?
Anything, anything at all? So we're ready to move to the estimated budget? Everybody has that in their tablet, it's under, if I recall, new and old business? On the top, estimated budget?
Need help? Yeah, they're good, so now that we're out of this, you head back and then go to old business, which is where we are.
So Mary, are you going to walk us through this, or do you just want us to look through it and ask questions?
No, um, I mean, generally, the only thing I changed in is stated on there, the only thing I did was I added the three percent increase, which we generally do every year for salaries. That's the only thing in the planning commission budget that was really changed, so.
Okay. So the three percent, so is there a reason that we don't have, um, an increase for Robbie?
Because that budget didn't get fully spent last year, her, her hourly budget or her hourly rate will increase if they give us a raise.
Okay.
But that budget didn't get fully spent last year, so.
Okay, so twenty-two thousand will cover.
There has to be a salary with her pay.
Okay.
That's got to be part of the salary, it's part-time pay.
Yeah, they're, that's, or they get set.
Okay, so you guys, the council, set the salary ordinance for each position? We don't need to.
We have to pay, but to raise anything, probably going to look at cutting, not raising.
Okay.
Look at that look. Look at that look.
And then I guess my only other question is the extra help, what is the six thousand, what is that for?
So that goes with Robbie too, she does extra help in the office.
Okay.
But, and then if we, um, Sabina used to use that too occasionally, she'd fill in with that, but then if we hire anybody to come into the office, like, if I'm going to be out or something and need somebody to cover for me.
So now that Sabina's full-time, so this is my next question, so when, when we moved Sabina to full-time, my understanding was that she was going to work half of her time for the planning commission, half of her time for the BZA, but I'm not seeing any compensation in the budget from the planning commission, and then I, of course, I have visibility to the other, and it's all under the BZA, so should half of her compensation come out of this fund? If she's part-time planning, part-time.
Not, yeah, I mean, I mean, that, that's up to the council, how she gets paid.
I haven't gotten that far yet.
Because, I mean, that, to me, I mean, it would be easier if she gets paid out one or the other.
Okay.
But, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm asking the question, I don't know how it should be, that, who's asking her? Okay.
I thought it came out of this.
What, what budget does the attorney fees come out of?
Um, both.
I'm not seeing it on the.
It'd be legal.
Legal services, I mean.
Yeah, it's right here, legal notices, hold on, I know I saw it. Just don't remember where.
Well, what I have, so what is the extra six thousand dollars for?
No, I see it.
Putting the time.
Other services.
Do they need a third person to pick up the slack?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't need a third person, because, like, if Mary's out, for example, Robbie might fill in while she's out on vacation, before Sabina would also fill in, but now Sabina's full-time, so we probably really don't need six thousand anymore, correct? No. What page is it, so I can tell them?
It's no, it's on number three.
Yeah, you just found it.
So, yeah, so we probably, I guess that would be my question.
Six thousand is like clothing money, it sounds like.
It is.
Okay.
It is, to be used for extra pay for Robbie in this case.
Or, you know, or somebody else from a different department.
Comes over and have.
Documented where that money.
Yeah.
Going to?
It would be once we spend it, correct? I mean, it would be in the.
Someone fill somebody for it to for it to get paid for the, the work performed out of that six thousand dollars.
Correct, correct, yes, so any additional help that the department might need, they can use that budget to pay for it. So.
Now, one of the things that I had a question about here, um, I know that it was discussed with Justin Schramm that extra time spent working on just solar stuff could be billed separately to the county. And I know that.
I have no idea about that. That was all new to me.
Yeah, I think he was billing it through the commissioner's side, um, but I think that's something we should look into, because on a month in particular that our attorney has, you know, thirty hours dealing with, um, our solar, I think he should be compensated for that, because I think that's going above and beyond what the typical role here would be. So I don't know where we would get that funds from, uh, but I think, I'm assuming anyway, the plant commission would have to approve it on a monthly basis, and then it would have to go to the commissioners for approval.
Yeah, I mean.
Against Justin, how he does it.
Yeah, I think that's.
Sure have, if Justin did that or not.
He did, I, I know that he did, because I seen it in our budget, that we approved it, but that's something that I think we should, since this attorney has just paid for a plant commission and not for the whole county, I think that's something we should look at.
Oh, I have a quick question, do you guys just have the one cellphone in your office? Okay, um, when I was just working on my budget, I called Stanley to ask him.
So, no.
Okay.
No. Cause I know where you.
Yeah.
It's for his cellphone and her tablet.
Oh, okay, yeah, alright. Right, that's where I was going, yeah. Save you a little bit of money there, so.
Yeah.
And then I just have a question because I'm a stickler, so I see that we have our office supplies and we left the budget the same. But part of our tablets was. To help reduce our office supplies cost, now I can't, like, you'll have to better quote me on this, but. You know, if on average you guys were printing forty pages for our binders.
Right.
Once a month.
Yeah.
It looks like that's almost five hundred dollars between the B Z A and. Planning commission and savings, so I don't know if we can lower that.
And that that's up to you guys, yeah, that's up to you guys.
I just know that next year's budget's gonna be tight, so wherever we can find some saves so that we're not losing it in.
And I mean, this is just an estimated budget too, that you guys are sending to council, so council's gonna be the ones ultimately.
Approving or denying now.
Prover deny or to make changes, so.
Yeah, I mean, so I would just, I would be curious if we could lower the office supplies or if we should wait and see what the true cost savings are. I don't know what you guys think. But I would have to assume that the amount of paper that we're saving alone is. Again, it's probably a couple hundred bucks.
I I hope, cause I mean, cause we just had an overage on our copy or so, I mean. That it would be great if we could.
If we can get lower.
Yeah.
Bose, what's your uh yearly fuel, I mean, is that forty five hundred been covering your expenses?
Yeah, but the way it falls at the end of the year, you can help me out here, but. Like, next year we'll get billed for what we use.
Like, the last bill that they send, they don't send it until in January, but it's for like. November and December, or if, I can't remember if they do three months at a time or two. But it's like the last two or three months of the year, but it doesn't get sent until like the first week of January. So that gets um.
Well, I guess my question is, is forty five hundred dollars enough, I mean, has that been?
Seems to be.
And that looks like it's covering your basic services, um, lube, tires and fuel. That's kinda.
Right.
Been falling underneath that.
And then we have auto repair maintenance for two thousand, does that feel right, like, do we have brakes getting ready, anything? Out of the ordinary that we see from a maintenance perspective on either vehicle?
No.
No. I think you said we just got tires, you know, recently, feel like you said something about new tires.
We got new brakes.
New brakes.
We had new tires washed here, I think.
And then I just have a question for clarification, because I was looking into just in general, the budget across the county. So the meetings, I'm trying to understand, because I know that we have night meeting compensation is nine hundred. Um, and that's for who?
That'd be me.
Okay, so.
You guys are. The board member.
Right, we're the board members, um, and it looks like that went to seventy-five as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so first the night meeting compensation, I don't know if anybody can answer this. But from what I'm hearing, it's not normal for employees to get. Paid for the night meetings, like, didn't the. Mike, the commissioners just deny that for the auditor's office?
We did, um, she she's salary in elected.
Okay.
And that situation was a little bit different.
Happens when she's out and Teresa or somebody else fills in, they're not getting paid either.
I'd have to double check that, uh, but that may be accurate.
Okay, I mean, one of those doesn't get paid, or I don't know, maybe your salary, and Robbie is here at each meeting and she doesn't. Get compensated unless.
No, well, she, with Robbie, she puts down, because she's part-time, she puts down like extra hours for meetings.
Okay, so you are getting your extra hours for the meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I guess I'm just looking to understand consistently what we're doing in the county, I feel like you're either gonna get. People are either gonna get paid for the evening meetings or they're not, but we can't have like the park board, Amy doesn't get paid to go to meetings. Or Bose, you know, I think it needs to be an all or nothing, but that's.
If if. Me that. You're supposed to work thirty-five hours a week and you got a night meeting. And it takes two hours, that means you work thirty-three hours during the week. Because I believe the job description. Says night meetings, says meetings.
Okay.
Mine, I don't think so.
Well, then we need to change the, we need to change the job description then.
We could definitely look at it for sure.
Because.
This, I mean, this position is always paid.
I don't know, we should be paying extra. For an employee that's already here, they can adjust their work schedule to reflect that money. That's that's my, that's my feeling, that's what I will push for.
And then approved to pay extra for extra hours, because it's solid.
No.
That's what the attorney.
Oh, that's different.
Yeah, he's he's contracted.
What do planning commission board members get paid?
Sixty-five dollars a month.
Do you get health insurance benefits or?
They get nothing.
And wasn't it fifty dollars last year? Yeah, so so this year it's fifty.
No, this year it's seventy-five. Yeah.
So then we'll get ten ninety-nine.
Has always been paid. For as long as I've been here, Pam was paid, Vicki was paid for night meetings.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just asking, so I have no idea, I just know that other people weren't getting it, it was brought up with the auditor's office, so. I just feel like if we're gonna do something for one employee, it needs to be consistent across the board, whether it's they're paid or they're not paid, so.
Are you all paid? For.
Her meeting.
No.
Not meeting, are you all paid for your job that, job title? No.
Well, he is, he's a commissioner, she's a surveyor, he's. They are.
Or half is volunteer.
Right.
Yeah, it's, we we get paid for attending the meetings, but that's it, so there's no additional pay outside of the seventy, apparently, I didn't even know what we got paid, so.
Pay the salary for.
No.
So some are on the clock. We don't pay or not, and some are paid positions, correct?
Correct, it depends, like, we have here, so Robbie, Burrows, Mary, they're all county employees, so they're getting their paychecks for that. And then we have the meetings in the evening.
You just saw grass.
Seventy-five dollars a minute.
Seventy-five dollars a minute you get.
Correct, that's it. That's it.
I'm doing here any better.
Thank you.
Myself and Mike, do we get paid since this is part of our job description, okay, I wasn't sure.
So probably Howard too.
Yeah, I asked that, and I asked Todd by virtue of her office, right.
You still get paid for it?
Yeah, I had no idea if we did or didn't.
The only person that doesn't is Phil.
Phil doesn't get paid for meetings.
He can't.
Right.
Got it.
The elected official did then?
Mm-hmm.
To come here at night?
Mm-hmm.
But they're not paid for the job.
Well, they do get a, uh, the elected officials do get a payment.
Right.
Get paid for their work, so commissioners and council members collect. Kind of a pay, it's not much. No, it's not based on forty hours.
I'll say that loud enough. Seventy-five dollars, like.
Mary, can I ask you a quick question? What use and subscriptions do you guys have in your office? I know what we what we have, of course, in the surveyor's office, but I didn't know what you guys were.
So that's um, to the international um, building codes, um. Yeah, so, so the one, the I A. I know the acronym, it's I A B O. The International Building Association, I believe. And then the. Association of. Floodplain.
Okay. And they offer like continued education, webinars and different things when you pay those subscriptions or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And I just have one.
Come on, you're like a member, so cheaper to go to.
So like, like one of the trainings he went to last year, he gets like a reduced price for it.
Because he's got the one for it, the subscription. I have a question on mileage, my understanding is we have vehicles for the planning commission. So what's the mileage for, like, if, is it for when we go to trainings and stuff?
We go to train, if like, we go to trainings or something, um, you guys can claim mileage too.
Okay.
If you go out and look at stuff.
Okay. Um, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering, because we have, I would think that we would just take like Bose, if you were going, you'd take the company truck, so there'd be. So I just wondered why we need two thousands a mile, and that seems high. How much did we use last year, do you know, for mileage?
Well, P and I, I don't know, yeah.
I I know you sent me all of it, I don't remember either, but I'd be curious to know what we actually spent this year in mileage.
That I, I mean, I can let you know.
I just know that our budget's gonna get cut, so if we can find places to cut it, so that it's not the things that hurt so bad.
That's up to you guys, yeah.
A quick question, Mary. Your total budget. And I don't have it, I could, I could find it tomorrow or later. How much does this vary from last year's budget?
Oh, I have that, I do have it, yeah, it is going to be a total increase of seven thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So roughly three percent?
So roughly three percent, so really, it's just the salary, the only things that I saw changes in was the three percent increases. Um, everything else was the same. No change, no change, three percent, legal services, you did a three percent increase.
Right.
Um, hostage stayed the same. Um, yeah, so that was it, it was literally just the increase to the two payrolls and, um. Legal, and then the twenty-two thousand, do we think that's enough to cover if there is a three percent increase, you said that you didn't use at all?
We would need to, at this meeting, approve it to send to the council.
Yeah, we could.
If they need it.
They're gonna need them for their first meeting in June.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
He goes to, she's still in June?
Yeah, so she's asked for them for June, so. I try to be, get them to her as soon as I can.
Can you, um, just, I I guess, maybe Mike, you can see what you can find out for us on the night meeting situation? And then we've gotta send it, so I guess we'll send it as it is. And then.
Well, you gotta vote.
Yeah.
Right.
You could make a motion for changes if you wanted to.
Well, but I don't know what anybody else is doing, so I'm not sure I wanna make a motion to change it without knowing what the rest of the county is doing.
I would suspect that the council is gonna look mostly at salaries and wages. Um, the other expenses here, they'll probably look at too, but I don't see anything that's gonna. Change drastically.
With the the county, county council, would they, if we need to make cuts, they tell us and then we would.
Right.
Would that be the?
We tell you, make this amount of cuts, if you don't do it, we'll do it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, so you would say, you need to cut this much and we can pick.
The budget workshop.
Okay.
When council has the budget workshop, you know.
Like, I mean, I can never.
When is that?
I hope it's.
Maybe the first one.
Okay, so you actually meet up with her, I do. We have, we have the department heads come in and say, go line by line over it all, whether or not any of it happens.
It's gonna be tough decisions this year.
Excuse me, the D N, you actually meet with the D L G, yeah?
I talked to them briefly about it, but we need to, I need to deal with them, because the cuts are gonna be probably pretty drastic.
Okay, they're working a cut, so you're talking about cutting what, salaries? Benses?
Yes. We don't, we don't know yet, we have to wait till we get the estimate of what we're gonna get, and then we have to work backwards and figure it out.
And who controls that?
The county council does.
Okay.
Let's see, ma'am, then the, it, we, and and Todd being the president of our council, wanna try to. Answer real real clear. When we approve budgets for everybody in Star County, I sit on the council and Todd does and. When we approved, and correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, when we, when we approved the budget. Then it's subject, it it goes to the state of Indiana. And the state of Indiana, very likely, in different years, will come back and say, no, you cut this budget five percent, six percent, three percent. Right, so what we accept as a council. Doesn't necessarily mean it's carved in stone, because the state of Indiana will review that. And they will come back to us and say, no, you need to cut, and that's what happened.
Because that money comes from Indiana.
Well, it comes from, it comes from the Star County taxpayers to the state of Indiana that that arrived.
And 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 one, the reason for some of the cut conversation is the state bill that passed. Where they're kind of changing the way the count, the way property taxes work, and in the end, it's actually going to hurt the county. Um, at least it appears like it is, but we're still waiting to get clarification on that.
Yeah, and if I understand what you're saying, right, that's one number. The whole county, they don't go in and say each individual budget, they just give you one number and.
Yeah, they just, they just say you have to cut this much, yeah, they'll say, cut it by five percent, they they won't tell you where to do it.
And if you don't do it, they'll be.
And they'll just tell us and then we'll have to look at this, if you cut ten percent, we're gonna have to go through the whole budget. And figure out how we can cut ten percent, so we're gonna have to raise taxes, and one of the other.
Any other discussion on the budget?
We will do that.
I mean, I'll make a motion, and we approve it right here, as is pending council's approval, yeah, I mean, right now, I don't. But I'm not sure if there's anything that we can answer, and if they need it by June.
We've got, we've got it, we've got a motion to approve it, do it in a second.
Second.
And a second by Howard. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This discussion got brought up last month, uh, coverage for inspections when Bose is unavailable. I did actually speak to the gentleman, his, unfortunately, his wife was in the hospital and. And the ICU, which was unfortunate. But anyway, I spoke to the gentleman that could be possible to do the inspections, I sent that information, Mary sent. A lot of information also about, like, he's building something right now in Knox, I believe. Um, but.
I think it's.
I I think everybody had his name, his information, he was the Marshall County Building Inspector. It would be per inspection, a situation that probably would have helped Bose maybe last week, he's, I'm sure he's behind trying to catch up. So, in a circumstance, when we actually need somebody, he would be more than qualified to fill in that role. He would, he has the insurance, he has all the information, if anybody would like to meet him, I could be more than happy to get Steve here. Super nice guy, um, he can go over anything, Bose knows him pretty well. I think Bose is comfortable to let him do the inspections when he's not available.
Do we know what the cost per extension would be?
I know, I thought about it, that's not in this line.
That fall under the.
Extra help?
Part, uh, part-time extra help.
You have to pay him whatever the stuff, we'd have to pay him the hour or later. Cause that's why the sovereign's is written.
I wondered about that, because I was gonna ask that before.
It doesn't, I mean, you come back that way, I mean, you guys could vote all you want, but. You have to say it better.
Not only that, on her, on her estimated budget, if she has it, she can, she can kick some different things back and forth anyway. So I know you can do that.
Well, you still have to have a line, slap, and I have an item.
A line.
Yeah, because she's got it in extra help, she could call it something else, could.
Have to do a transfer.
Yeah, but she still could do that. I get that.
You'd rather have it up front, so everybody knows.
Yeah.
How much per inspection?
He did not say, and I don't even think we even discussed that.
And I guess I'm just curious, did we make any progress with talking, I thought we were gonna talk to some of the neighboring counties to do maybe swaps?
I think Mike did.
I did talk to him, um, Marshall County was receptive to the idea, um. Uh, but I didn't get the feeling from Bose that he was as interested, so I kind of tapped the brakes on that, and that's fine. Um, but, yeah, I did talk to Marshall County.
So, I had. Oh, an idea. And kind of going with the Marshall County thing. Could we look into maybe getting an agreement set up, maybe with the city of Knox and the city of Judson? And then in that situation, like where he's out. They, the Judson inspector does that side of the county inspections, and then the city of Knox guy would do like this side of. The county. And then like, when either one of them went on vacation, then he could fill in. For them.
Right, so when I spoke to the Marshall County guys, they were receptive because it wouldn't cost them extra money. Um, so the the deal was, it would just be kind of a handshake as to, hey, if you're. Um, so the, the deal was it would just be kind of a handshake as to, hey, if you're gone, we'll come over and help. And if, you know, recip- reciprocate, uh, so there wouldn't be an extra line item as for an expense. So to speak, and I'm assuming the city would potentially do something very similar. That way, no money is actually having to be exchanged.
I was thinking if we could get something like that set up.
Would that double Bose's work schedule to do his onward plus Marshall?
Right, so that would be kind of the, the agreement, so to speak. Um, as far as hiring a contractor, I guess I would be opposed to that. Uh, if it was a contractor that is doing work in Stark County. I, I feel like that'd be a conflict of interest.
Maybe.
If it was a contractor that only did work in Indianapolis and they were coming up here, um, and they did no work in Stark County, uh, I could potentially get on board with that. But as a contractor that is currently and will continue to do work in Stark County, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that.
Doesn't matter. They're just being defined somehow.
If it's put on like a hundred mile rate, you know. Where it's nobody or within a hundred miles from Stark County, it'd be the spec, I'm looking up their mileage, but. Not in, in the same county, that's a good point.
I like the idea, seeing if Knox or Judson, because then, I mean, Marshall's great, but that would require you driving a lot further. At least if we can make that agreement, I'd be curious to see what kind of agreement, if they're open to it. And then if they are, if the two cities are open to it, I'm sure Tim can help us write some kind of a reciprocal agreement up. Kind of like we do with the fire departments and.
Who, who do you want to reach out? To see about that? You guys wanna reach out to him or do us?
Bose, you already have that relationship, right?
All but the mayor, that's who you're gonna have to go through, you know.
It, it might actually be a good idea for Matt as the president. Um, to reach out. And he's not here tonight, so I'm not throwing him under the bus at all, but.
The guy that's not here.
Might be a suggestion. And, and quite honestly, if we develop a relationship with Knox and Judson. I still think it would be good to develop a relationship with Marshall County and some of the other surrounding. Just in case we ever are actually in a pinch and need to make that emergency phone call, we've at least established a ra- a relationship with them.
Could you have a reciprocity with just one, one county takes the inspections for the other county? With a ceiling on how many? You know, if, if one is doing that, the other one's not, that's not quite fair. But with a ceiling or a, a limit of some kind, it is strictly gratis and just exchanged.
Right, and that's kind of what was talked about was, you know, just reciprocate a little bit here or there in an emergency situation. Um, and that, again, if you work with other government entities, there's not actually money being exchanged. It's more of a handshake type of deal that, hey, we'll help you in, in the event that, yeah. So I, I think that would be good to develop that going forward.
Okay, so at this point.
So, connect with Matt, I guess. Do you have, I guess my question, Bose, is do you have time off again before our next meeting where we could possibly? Because Matt's not here unless somebody can. Okay, I just don't want you to be in a situation where you're waiting for Matt to.
I can contact Denny.
Okay.
I've got a good relationship with Denny, so I, I mean, if Matt wants to talk to Auburn Judson, that's fine. So I'll volunteer to do the Knox.
So we'll have Denny or Danny. We'll have Mark reach out.
And Mark.
I'll contact. Because I've got it. He called me today and so I can let him know about that. Okay, alright, um, Roberta, um, you have the draft proposal timeline for solar and battery ordinance updates?
Yeah, so do you wanna pull up? That way the public can see it.
Which one do you want?
Uh, just the, um, the PowerPoint. You should kind of walk us through. So I just want to start by saying, this is by no means a finished product. Uh, and I am not looking to take this over, but what I was hoping to do is just offer kind of a framework to everybody here. Um, something to help us kind of move forward quickly, clearly, and collaboratively on these ordinance updates that we need to do. Um, I mean, we obviously already agreed that they're kind of needed, right? Um, we did send all of the documents out over the course of the last, I don't know, couple of weeks. So I just kind of threw this together, so obviously can skip this. This is just the cover slide. Um, so this is just kind of the why, right? So we know our twenty-two twenty-two ordinance. It was a step in the right direction. We know that. Um, we've learned a lot since then. Uh, so it does have some, some leave outs that are critical. Decommissioning, road use, fire safety, and then of course, we know the battery storage was also included. Um, we've been relying heavily on separate agreements. Outside of the ordinance that could instead actually be embedded in the ordinance, which would give us more consistent standards, eliminating kind of a case by case negotiation process. And as we know, the more time expires February twenty-sixth, so we're kind of getting close to running out of time on this. Um, so if you want to go to the next slide, I've got mine in front of me because I can't see that. So some of the documents that I shared with you guys, um, I did send a draft ordinance for solar. That ordinance is a combination of our first two ordinances. Um, the twenty-twenty-five draft that I think it was January. And then just some feedback in general that we've received over the last couple of years from the public. Um, battery storage ordinance is really a combination of, again, the one that we wrote. And then just looking at some other ordinances in different counties. Um, I also included a permit application process draft. That was one of the things that we had talked about was that we don't really feel like we have a good, solid permit process. Um, so there's a draft of that in there. Um, keeping in mind, all of these are working drafts, so there's probably a lot of errors in them. And then the other two documents are gap analysis document and a work group assignment document, as well as a monthly progress checklist. The reason for all of them is we have kind of separate ways that we can go if you want to, yep, there we go. Um, so we can either take the draft ordinances that we have and start just plugging away at them. Or we can start from scratch. So that's kind of, I'm giving us two options. Um, the gap analysis document, the work group assignments, all of that is really kind of a start from scratch, which I'm not sure we need to do. But what I have kind of proposed is that maybe in June, we have a public forum. Preferably an evening, maybe it's with the tech review committee to just hear some feedback from the public. Let's, I want to hear from the landowners, I want to hear from solar companies, and of course, just in general from the community. Make sure that we're taking everything into consideration that the public wants. And then that would put us at July is kind of doing that best practice research if we don't want to use the ordinances that we have. Um, August, that would have us drafting and tech review meetings, and then September would be our draft review. October is the planning commission workshop to make sure that everything looks good. November would be the finalized drafts after Tim's looked at them. And then a public comment, of course, public hearing, legal review, and then final adoption in February. So it feels like we have a lot of time, but when you start really looking at it, I don't think that we have as much time as we think we do. Um, so if you want to skip to the next, so the work group collaboration, again, that would just be using the gap analysis. Um, workshop assignment sheet, breaking us into, basically, we're breaking it into smaller portions and having different groups work on it. Um, and it would just balance the work across all of us. So if you want to click to the next, that is tiny, but you get the idea. So the gap analysis, the idea there is that you take a look at, you know, what's in our current ordinance. What are the things that we need to look to adjust and add, change, and then any notes or issues as we've seen happen in the past? And then same thing for the battery storage, um, so it would be for both. And then you can see the monthly progress checklist is just that. Keeps us in check. And then this is just work group assignment, so we could kind of split the ordinance into different sections. Decommissioning, road use, fire prevention, visual screening, setbacks, site access, noise neighbor impact, environmental protections, utility interconnection. Blah, 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 blah. So that's how we would just break that all down. Um, next slide, I'm gonna try to go quick because it's getting late. Um, again, proposing that evening public input session sometime in June, gather that feedback. Um, and then really, it's just gonna help us build the transparency and the public trust that I think we need moving into the new ordinances. So my thought would be next steps, do we want to decide, do we start from scratch or use the provided drafts? And then either way from there, we can decide how we're gonna proceed. If we're gonna start from scratch, assign sections for the tech review committee. Um, or have them assign those sections. And then I think what we can vote on is maybe getting that public input meeting on the agenda for June, because I think we'll need that either way, but those are just my thoughts. And then, of course, final goal is just to adopt a clear and forceful community informed ordinance ahead of our moratorium deadline. So I did send out the ordinance out to everybody, um, the two drafts. Um, I know they're long. I think we're going from like a three-page ordinance to sixty pages. Um, so.
Huh, three pages?
I think our current one is, how many pages? Is it fourteen? Okay, I, I print front and back, so I'm not sure. But either way, we're, you know, we're getting much heavier on the ordinance, so it's gonna take some time to get through it. Um, so that's all I had. So I will see what questions are, what are your thoughts?
Well, one thing I'll agree with, uh, what you said is, um, getting it set up as soon as possible to get some public input. Because I, I really like hearing from the public what they have to say, and I don't see how we could possibly draft anything without some public input.
I would agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess my question, Mary, tech review is not a paid, right?
It's not what?
It's not paid. There's no. Okay, so I guess my question is, would we be better off having the tech review committee do that or? I, I'm just, otherwise we're adding another meeting.
I would think the plan commission.
Plan commission.
Yeah, and we could actually probably do it in a regular meeting, couldn't we? And just have it as a, an item as a public. I, I don't know if we'd want to hold that in a different venue, potentially. We may have some folks show up.
Show up, I have a question.
Yeah.
I saw that you had on, or February, you wanted to have the final. But am I correct in assuming that commissioners would be the ones approving the final ordinance? Where you, you guys would have to do a recommendation to that?
Yeah, which is where the legal review is, so it's like December, January is when everything goes through and then.
Final, final adoption was the commissioners.
Final adoption is the commissioners in February. Thank you. And if we can get it done sooner, great.
You have, you have two routes you can take, okay? You didn't, what are the advantages of them? Why, why would you want to start from scratch and or why would you want to, you know, learn what you lesson you've already learned? What's the advantage of either one?
Hey, get his name.
I'm sorry, what was your name, sir?
Tom Torso.
Tom, I, I'm not sure that there's a disadvantage or advantage. We had talked about potentially looking at using a, a company to help us with this. So originally, when I looked at kind of that, that was been starting from scratch. It's expensive, so our thought was we can do it ourselves, starting from scratch or build off of what we have. So again, just options. It's not my decision to make, it's up to the entire board, so I don't want to make any assumptions as to which route. We would want to go. I agree that we can start with. What we have. But even if we start with what we have, the original, what we had, the old ordinance, there's a lot of gap analysis that needs to be done. Now, I did, I played with it a little bit and created two new ordinances. This is the solar. And then this is the battery. But again, that's just me. And there's some of us here that have to look at it, review it, and then also get input, so. And this is after, you know, probably hours and hours of just pooling information from other places, so.
I, I would be in favor of kind of starting where we are. Because on the time, timeline, it doesn't mean we can't like change ninety percent of it. I mean, but there probably are some sections that are better than others.
Yeah.
So then just starting from scratch is gonna.
Really take time.
Yeah.
Another suggestion is just to look at, don't we invent the wheel, you know, and there are, there are counties and cities out there, or say counties, who have. Done this throughout the state and are very successful protecting the taxpayers and the companies and the infrastructure landowners at the same time, so. You know, we got plenty of time to look at what's been done and what's worked, what's not worked, and the concept. Of, uh, why we're doing this is to get rid of, eliminate the mistakes and the gaps that have been left in place. Some of which you guys talked about tonight. And so you're, you're going through that and you're smooching this stuff over at the same time, bringing the public influence, so. This gentleman asks, you know, why would you do that? It's because the old way didn't work and it left you guys with a lot of issues. You're having to fix those things, so you want to get all that fat cut. And then, uh, you know, the other concept is, you know, what you guys spoke of earlier, where we're talking about budget cut difference into the next year. I mean, people voted for certain way for the government to operate, which is more lean. And then Brian passed that guy, passed that on to you guys, so either you guys cut fat or you raise taxes. So what do people want? Either they want a leaner government or they want the correct taxes, so don't be going with like the bad guys, so I'm kidding that. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to, um, my name is Billy Influtis. I'm with the Indiana Land and Liberty Coalition. And we're actually a nonprofit group, a conservative nonprofit group that's traveling across the state. Helping county boards like you draft solar and battery storage, um, ways, ordinances. Um, so we have a solar guide, a solar ordinance guidebook that we provide to counties. We're working on a battery storage one. Uh, but I would love to help you guys in any way and provide that to you, just for reference of what's worked in other counties. We have it all collated. I actually have it in my car with me. I could bring it in afterwards for you guys to listen. Um, but just wanted to, to throw that out there and add that for you.
Is that available online too? Is that something we can access?
I would have to email it to you. It's a proprietary commercial. Um, but like I said, I have a physical copy for the solar one in my car that I can run out for you. Um, and we're drafting a battery storage one.
Mr. Klein?
Uh, my question is, uh, is, I know it was draft ordinance circulated, uh, a couple of months ago. And, and so you got an updated version of that. How do we get access to that? Can we do it?
Yeah, we don't really have an updated version. I have something I pulled together and shared, but it's not, it has not been looked at by anybody voted on. We obviously wouldn't do that until we were in a public meeting, but you know, I looked at things like, and I'm just gonna go out, Chris. Um, for example, our vegetation, you know, in that ordinance, it was pretty set on what we had to do. So I took it upon myself to add in that if we're using agrivoltax, what are the requirements? For that, what's your timeline, right? If you don't start doing it within a certain amount of time, then you do have to revert back to the planning. Or if the agrivoltax stops for a certain, so again, just really trying to be very, very specific with what the requirements are.
Well, for, to, and I appreciate that, the, um, I guess again, for the, make this an effective, efficient ordinance. And appreciate you wanting to have the public input, it just, the sooner we can look at the documents you're looking at. I like even the schedule that I, I don't even get all that down. If we can get that slide.
Um, I might have it in here.
I got, I got.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, I've got a copy of the, just kind of the general that you're welcome to have and then to hand that out, so.
So I guess the other question, what are we, are we voting on anything on this? Or we're gonna say we're gonna have a public meeting next month? Is that what we're voting on?
Yes, I, I think we should have a public meeting, get that in motion. And we need to have a, an open slot of at least an hour, I think, scheduled for just public comment. Now, if it doesn't take that long, great, but, um, I, I think at least an hour for folks to be able to talk.
Then you're not gonna be.
And I would, I would like to try to get it a little later. I mean, I know we start at five thirty. But the general public, you know, they got kids, they're trying to get fed. So I mean, if we can start it at, you know, six o'clock even, I think that that would be better for.
This meeting didn't start till six thirty.
This meeting started, you're on the wrong time. I, I just think six o'clock is, it's just the only problem is on the same day, we have our B Z A, so.
Right.
Yes, that makes. Late nuns for me.
Yeah.
Well, B Z A is a guy plotted out for three months advance, right? Your slots.
Is it?
We don't, your slots are for June, is that correct? You, you have.
Are scheduled out, aren't you?
Oh, till August.
So, do we just want to schedule it on a separate day? I don't know what the consensus of the board here.
An hour or two for it.
Do we want to set that today or do we want, um, Mary to send out an email to the board members to try to get it narrowed down?
And if you do it that way, does it have to be public and sent out on a separate public forum if you do it that way?
Everybody's.
I just gotta advertise it like.
Okay. I think it's.
I just have to have, I have to have a motion that you guys. Want the regular scheduled meeting on a different night.
Well, you don't have to tell me. Well, you don't have to tell me what night, but. Yeah, we just need to add a meeting, I don't think we wanna combine them, because like Mike said, I think we really need, and Howard you said. Focus on, so I would make a motion that we add an additional meeting for the planning commission, special meeting in June. Preferably starting at six P M for the general public.
And do you think we need a different venue?
I don't know, I don't know what to think.
Wouldn't hurt.
Wouldn't hurt.
We just the community center.
Yeah, and it should really be recordable.
Well, it may not have to stream necessarily, but we could set something up. And then post it.
Can we use the conference room, the courtroom out of jail?
Told me it's really not much bigger than that.
Oh, it's not, oh.
So I would make a motion that we try to find a larger venue. Starting at six P M or solar discussion.
We'll need security as well.
With security.
At the jail.
A jail.
Yeah, how much more secure.
If that's a venue that.
We can do it at the jail, I think that's great, so.
What do you think, Oscar, is it bigger than this?
Give me a tape, measure Ogma out and check.
I have.
I think we should send a minimum of a hundred people to show up. I've been to a couple of the solar meetings last year and and I would estimate there was a hundred people there.
So we have.
That was your motion.
Okay, all in favor?
The only thing we didn't figure out was the date, Mary, well, you just send some proposed dates once you find out when we can use the venue.
Okay, we're moving on.
I tried to look at that and I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
Told you, Tom.
Well, it's, it's, you said access on me at the top, so I was like, okay. I just thought that was you telling me to ask you here. No, 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 that was my note for Boz, when I give him stuff, I, I make notes on it. To, for him to ask me about, but that's what it's on, he asked me, so I was like, okay, I guess we're just gonna ask.
Okay, so um, this property here um in red. From what I have found out since I've been questioned about what they can do on it and that. It is the old um Justin, Judson pack. Place meat packing. Plant, um. So when I looked it up in that, cause there's potentially a new owner that wants to buy it and wants to. Um, look at possibly tearing down the existing building that's there, cause it's not in great condition, they told me. And then possibly building something new, but still to do that same type of business. Okay, it hasn't been open in. Quite a few years, I think since oh four.
As in meatpacking? Oh, fantastic, okay.
Here's the issue. When I looked this up on our zoning maps. It is zone R two. I gave you these maps.
It's kinda hard to see the uh.
It's right about there.
So it's considered a residential.
And that, yeah, on this one here, it's a little bit more, cause I zoomed in on it, but it's like right in here, in this area. And then our other larger maps too. It's gonna be in your, our R two area. So. I didn't make the zoning maps, like you all know, I mean, they were, they're made like back in the sixties. Uh, this property is less than ten acres, so it's not an option to rezone on it. But the problem we're running into is um, they're telling me it's been a meatpacking industry there since like the nineteen hundreds. It's had several different owners. That I can see on the property card. Problem is, I'm not finding where any variance was ever applied for. To do that type of business there.
There's a person here that owns it?
Mr. Wingback wants to purchase the property. Little misinformation, there's gonna be some demo, but he already has a business plan. He has pretty much the whole thing worked out. It will be redone, yeah, and um renovated.
So I've discussed this with Tim. And the question here is. Which I need you guys to answer. Is which category here? Are you gonna want this to fall under? Cause that's gonna determine whether or not they even are able. To seek a special use variance for that property. So on our um chart four here.
The yellow are our two options.
The, the yellow are our two options. So I have processing of agricultural products. Which if we're considering it that option, then it would not be a permitted conditional use at all in this zoning. And then we have special processing of agricultural products such as confined feeding operations, which, I mean, this. Is not really a confined feeding operation type of business, but it says it requires state permitting and licensing, which I'm. I'm hoping a meatpacking plant. Which it would be allowed in that zone was a special use variance. So I need you guys to make a decision on which one it's gonna be considered.
And then it would go to the BZA from, from there for the.
It's the second.
The second. Pretty much kills it.
Kills it.
The first option would kill it, why's that?
In the right box, so R two will be, R two.
That, there's, it's not permitted in these three. So.
Well, I for one would like to hear more about it. I wouldn't wanna kill it.
To talk to you about it and tell you about it, so.
Boz, either one of these, wouldn't it fall under a commercial? So would that require state? So this property is an oddly shaped property, just cause it's so narrow. Would the state have setback requirements for new construction here? I mean, this is pretty tight.
Probably be more into how they butcher and, you know what I mean, things like that more than the.
Processing especially.
The building part.
Well, the, I know the structure is gonna be, if it's considered commercial, they're gonna crack down on that, I mean, I've dealt with that. It's, that can be tough sometimes.
Yeah, cause when you get your state design release and stuff like that. I mean, they're the ones that's gonna come in and say, okay, you need to do.
How's this fall under the jurisdiction of the town of Judson?
That's what really surprised the heck out of me too. Well, I would have thought. Annexed into the town of Judson. But it's not.
As a planning commissioner member. This gentleman's trying to start a new business in the county, he's trying to advance the county, he's gonna benefit the county, it's gonna benefit all of us. I think we should make it the easiest way possible. We want him to, we want you to follow regulations and laws and rules and respect, but I think we should make it the easiest path possible for this gentleman to start his business.
I would agree.
And I'm not sure what that is.
The state's gonna set those guidelines.
Here, here's a question, since like this was a meatpacking plant, long time ago, would probably before those zones, maybe before the zoning.
The problem though is.
You have to go get it.
They're gonna be processing. I'm assuming animals. So wouldn't that fall under the processing of agricultural products? And, and my understanding that that, if we put it underneath that, it kills the project. It doesn't really matter, I mean, if, if they're processing agricultural products. You can't. Can't cover that up with sugar, I mean, this is what they're gonna fall under if you're following the guidelines.
But if you go back to the language, can you pull?
You rezone it, eggs?
That'd be spot zoning.
Special processing vehicles such as, it's not saying that's what it is, that's just an example. It could be that or any other.
And it doesn't define. So it's, it's very vague, so.
Is there a bigger, um, I mean, this is just a, an outline, but is there a bigger scope of that, that? We can read through, I mean, I feel like there's gotta be more to it than just that comment.
And can I ask? Are, is this a? A small operation, you know, say, I'm familiar with a lot of butcher shops and.
If you can give them just a minute, if they've got a whole business, kind of what friends do. Just giving an overview of what they're gonna extend to your area.
Just make a motion and let them open up the public comment and let them talk.
You don't have to. This isn't a public hearing, yeah.
You wanna, you can come on.
Yeah, come on up, wanna hear what you're doing.
So starting out will be kind of smaller uh for the first two years, and then by year three, we plan to grow. Uh, starting out, we're looking at roughly six to eight employees, uh, and then eventually by year three, wanna grow to fifteen. So that's kinda where we're looking at, uh, not real good at talking, so.
What are your processes?
Beef, pork, and eventually we would like to get to the point where we're doing USDA certified uh poultry.
I was just gonna ask about poultry, I think that's the hardest one.
Yes, yeah, uh, I know Clark Family Farm from Sam Pier, they're driving eight and a half hours to get theirs next down.
Weren't we also looking, I'm just talking out loud, but any chance that you'll do like sheep?
Yeah, lamb.
Say that is because we're doing the agrivoltaics and one of the issues that we're having is being able to actually, you know, a lot of farmers are sending. This outside of our county, so if we can keep that money here.
We are open to doing any, whatever benefits the county, um, and that's what, she's originally from North Judson, um, from White County originally. So we would like for this to go in Stark County, but we've also been asked with Kalaski County, um, by their developmental. Because I know they're looking for this as well.
And you'll do customs, processing. So that's what you'll specialize in?
Yes, yeah, we wanna, we wanna give people in the community a chance afterward, you want a fresh uh team mouth.
So similar to country ground?
Yes, yeah, uh, eventually a little bit bigger, we hope. With eventually getting into doing slaughter too, just the slaughter and shipping those out as well. We have that option too, to other butcher shops that don't like doing slaughter side.
And there's really no houses right there, right? No, across the state, there's our houses.
But what's this, is there like a track?
That's the high school.
That's the school.
So the high school is within, I don't know, a couple hundred yards.
Uh, the bus garage is about probably a hundred, hundred fifty.
That's the track, and then the school is further.
Right, so we're still not talking a lot of distance here. I mean, I've been to a lot of butcher shops, there can be quite an odor.
Yeah, things aren't done right, yeah, and especially the ones that aren't USDA, the ones that are just state, uh, BOAH and state inspected. They're a lot more lenient, uh, with us being USDA and with new air pandemic systems and everything, we, we don't wanna be hated in the community. Uh, by people that come to games and score new events, so. Gunslingness is the number one thing.
Especially if you get into birds.
That we would be doing a different. But also too, just to ease your mind with the, uh, if you get a chance, go to Monon, uh, Monon Meats, which is within, you can see it from the high school. Uh, no, no further than that, and I graduated from there.
Isn't it Star City, the, like a, a meat processing place in like the middle town?
Yes, yeah, there's things you can do.
So what do we need to do at this point?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, so we need to decide this is the route we wanna go, that it goes to the, it still goes to the BZA.
Yeah, it'll still go to BZA.
Which I think we need more answers, but I think what we're trying to get to is just. Can we get them to the zoning that they need so that we can then do the other investigation?
Well, I need. I needed to find, not the zoning.
So we would need to classify it as whatever number that is, special processing of agricultural product. Well, I would make a motion that we classify it as number one, special processing of agricultural products. Such as any confined feeding operations required state permit or license. So, can I ask a question or do I have to wait? So if it was zoned. R two in the sixties, how were they operating with the shop until two thousand and one? Because they might have had a variance, so, no? Grandfathered in was a, maybe, that's what I, I guess.
Nineteen twenty eight.
They built the school around it, that, that, they were there be- before the school.
Every Kelly Shepherd, this, he's a superintendent at North Judson, he's, I mean, he's the one that lives right there and he's, he's excited. Anybody that you talk to has been.
We went around all the houses first, cause we didn't, we don't want anybody.
That's quite a commodity these days, when you gotta wait eight, nine months to get a stair bush, and it's twelve hundred pound and they got ready to go. Down that road.
Well, it helps the local farmers and it brings money in from other counties too.
And I'm assuming you'd have a meat counter, people going by fresh beef.
Starting off small and hopefully grow as.
So I have a motion to. Do I have a second?
Second.
I might get through the night. Code enforcement officer report.
Did you vote?
I'm nay.
Okay. Anybody else vote differently? Three twenty four Jerry Tolson property. Um, they haven't made their payment, they're supposed to make it by May twelfth. I'm not sure she came and made it, no, so she didn't make that. And then the Joshua Whitfield property, um, they are actively cleaning up on that property as well. The Joseph Mish property, I contacted um. Email, book Walter. Mish property.
What, what are they doing on that?
Maybe we should have others coming to speak about that property as well.
And which one is this?
You guys gave me constructions out of proceed.
Well, basically on this property, Shram took it and um he sent out the last part of the ordinance that. He was doing, but now it goes to the new attorney to handle it, and it's at the. I already did my whole part on it, so I'm just waiting for the next step. And he already, um, Shram gave the fine and everything, but I just don't know response from the property and I'm still having complaints.
Then it would go to.
Right, that's you guys have given the permission to take one back.
What's wrong, what, what are they doing?
The neighbors are complaining of them, uh, just throwing out their trash and junk and debris, and then they're. The neighbor started complaining of them, uh, just throwing out their trash and junk and debris, and then they're, um. Dumping out their cat litter and stuff right out by our fence and stuff, so.
Okay.
And it's been going on for about two years.
It's disgusting. I mean, it's.
Okay, there she is.
Yeah, I moved in, I bought the hot property next door, had to put up a major privacy fence just to kind of keep it, so I don't have to see it. But the smell and the odor, um, the animals that it's drawing in, I mean, I'm not making up. I mean, just literally throw the trash out the door, and wherever it lands, it stays until it blows away. Um, it, it's disgusting.
Wouldn't you say your name is?
My name is Vicky. Hollen, H O L L O N.
What's your address, Vicky?
My address is one oh nine, six eight. East Mohegan. That's Killslake, Warburton.
Yeah, you live at the mic.
We have our attorney take the follow, the next, follow the following further steps in this matter.
We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Because it is a shame, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Robbie, for all your help, but, um.
Like did.
Um, it, it's. Just listening to all the issues that you have at hand, and, and here a fine has been placed. All this paper trail has been done over a year, and it all says in ten days, in ten days, but there's no follow through. So I don't know, you know, I, again, I don't know all the ins and outs of it. She's part time, I don't know, she, I, obviously she can't just go charging in there with a bulldozer and, you know, or a backhoe, but. Um, yeah, I just see the funds that what you're doing, it's not getting anything done, they're definitely.
It's a process, ma'am.
Okay, and the other thing I'd like to say is, these people work. They have the jobs. One's a nurse, and the other one drives a dump truck, beautiful gorgeous dump truck sitting in front of this mess, so it's just totally.
Yeah, so then the next process is go to court.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're moving forward.
Those cases is we'll take it before a judge and bring them in, and the judge will say, you've gotta do it, and then get another chance. But at the point if they don't, what a judge says, and the judge has much more authority.
Now, I'm just. I mean, I've been going into this for two years that I've been involved, my understanding, this just didn't start. So, and other people have been involved in it also, so is this, um. I guess at this point we start fresh, so they will be.
Once the suits filed, they have twenty-three days to respond, to answer it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, um, other business from the board, public comments, Deb?
I have two issues to address. I have my notes written, so I don't forget what I wanna say and how I wanna say it. First would be to address the trespassing on our private property by a planning commission board member. During the last meeting, it came up. There should be a check on whether or not construction had begun on the next era solar project. I was at that meeting. And, um, I think we all assumed that would be a drive-by check, because you could see construction from the road. And of course, I assumed it would be on our property, so I called the office the next morning to say who's coming out and when, and I was told. They were already on their way. I got there and found out a planning board commissioner drove all over, or walked all over somehow. Our privately owned property. In our name, we just paid tons of taxes on our properties. And took pictures, shared them with the entire board. I did get there to demand she left, but that was, that's too late, it was already done. I really felt this wasn't right, that some person would just walk over, take pictures, share them with whomever she chose. So I contacted my attorney, I even hesitate to say my attorney, we've never had to use attorneys in our life to protect ourselves. But boy lightly. Anyway, he cited two codes and also two Indiana cases pertaining to this. His summary concluded that a planning board commission member does not have permission to go on private property. Unless there's a specific local ordinance or statutory provision granting such authority to members of a planning commission. Also, planning commission members do not have the right to enter and inspect real property in the context of any pending petition. Is there any explanation for this?
I was just in the car with Bose.
How'd you get pictures all the way in the background, forty acres?
He drove.
We drove.
Who took the pictures?
We both did from the windows.
Has the right to be there.
I was just in the car with him.
Who, who sent the email out with all the pictures?
I sent an email following up.
Did you have permission from the property owner to drive all over, ride all over? To go all over and take pictures of our private property?
Am I allowed to be a passenger? I mean, I'm not sure what to say, I did not drive my vehicle through your property.
Your body went through our property, what's the difference?
I was in a vehicle.
To do that?
My assumption was I was with. Our building.
You assume.
I don't know what, I was asked to go with, Bose asked me to get in his truck, I got in his truck. He drove off there.
You said the email, you're in your email, you said the attorney suggested you go.
Suggested that we go look at the property.
On the advice of our attorney after the meeting, it was recommended that I. And the building commissioner Bose conduct a site visit today.
Exactly. I, I'm not sure what you want me to say at this point, I was with our building commissioner, I got out of my vehicle, my vehicle was parked on the. Right of way in the road, I got in the truck with Bose. And then we left, even once we.
And you took pictures? Did you take the pictures?
I don't think I did, actually. I don't think I did, I think you sent them to me.
And you asked me to send it to you.
So it was Bose that took the pictures, in fact, I didn't even have my phone with me, it was in the car.
But no brown on property?
I was in our planning.
Do you have the right as a planning commission member to come inspect my property?
I'm assuming I have a right to be a passenger in Bose's vehicle, but that's all I can say, I can't answer that question.
I sit down tonight, so I'm even get permission. And maybe. Anybody that went on our property should have asked permission. It's not an exercised solar contract. Secondly. I researched the Indiana codes that were presented at the April ninth meeting. That another same planning commissioner gave. The code reference was I C twenty-two, twelve, one, seven. It was bred to include the words, the construction means testing, boring, clearing, and grading. What am I missing? Because I don't see any of those descriptive words in that code. Again, my attorney. Confirm there are no such words in that code, what you were trying to prove is that next era had started construction. Where did you get those words? That construction meant testing, grading, boring.
I just Googled.
Googled what?
Googled what the definition of construction was. And since then, it's been discovered that.
You were wrong.
That definition was maybe not accurate.
You added the words to the code, I have the recording.
Yeah, I'm not sure if.
You also cited our county ordinance, says no construction at this point. I found that. No construction until this, two things they needed. You again, said those words were on our county ordinance, no testing, no boring, no grading, and you repeated no testing. Those words are nowhere in that ordinance.
I never said that was in the ordinance.
I have the recording.
Okay, well, I.
I have the recording. Where'd you get those words? If they're not in the ordinance.
I told you what I did, I looked up what the definition of construction.
No, it's, I looked it up too, the code doesn't even apply to such a project, that code. Says for dwellings, buildings, things that public will use, such as bunkhouses, bunching cores, low rise, that code does not even apply. This is called falsifying, spinning, and trying to get the other born members. To you, and, and the public to see advised opinion. I would not trust someone like that to write a new ordinance. And in summary, what she was trying to do, and said it, was to stop. Next era, because they've already started construction, and you know what that meant? We could use multiple mil- lose multiple million dollars for our county, and you sat there and said. Oh, there goes our E D A, because they've done construction, are we trying to lose multiple millions of dollars from a permitted project?
They haven't even applied for an E D A yet, so.
They have. It hasn't come to your table, has it? Well, according to them, because I've been on them, we need an E D A, we want our project to support this county. Because an economic development plan means that extra tax money, and this is layman's terms, general. Will come back to the county to be used for economic development, it won't go to the state. So that they can trickle down whatever they wanna give us in their new cuts. And we said over and over, and here we don't have money, we're gonna have to cut, don't come ask for more money to do your job right. But let's not take solar money. It's clean, it's safe, and it's, it's bringing money to this county. You sat here and said, oh, great, let's make it as easy as possible on landowners, certain landowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Another month's report for March twenty twenty five?